Call to order. The September 1st, 2020 Lake Mills City Council meeting. And I'd like the roll call called.
Mr. Fields?
Turn on your mic.
He just, he just lost connection again.
Do you want me to proceed?
Yeah, keep going. If he comes back on, I'll let you know.
Diane?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
And Mr. Foster previously informed staff that he'd be unavailable for this evening's meeting.
And we have not heard yet from Mr. Fields.
No, and he's not back on yet.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving to item four, correction and/or approval of the special work session and the city council meeting minutes of August 18th, 2020. What is the, the pleasure of the council? Do we want to do them together or separately approving the minutes?
I'll move the work, approval of the work session of August 18th, 2020.
Okay, that was just the work session, correct?
Yeah, Doug.
Okay, I, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the special work session and for August 18th, 2020. Any discussion or changes? Seeing none, call the roll.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
And Mr. Fields, are you back yet?
I am back, sorry about that. Having IP problems today.
Sure. This was to vote on the special work session minutes for August 18th.
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, thank you. Now the city council minutes for that same date, August 18th. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is that Doug?
Yeah.
Okay, Doug, is there a second?
Second.
Vicki, second. Okay, any comments or corrections before we vote on that? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. Moving on to correspondence. Would someone like to share their correspondence with the rest of the council?
Yeah, I'd like to say I had a conversation, telephone conversation with constituent about several items going on in the city. And I've had, and I believe other members have gotten a letter or two about the situation in Tyronina Park.
Okay. Anyone else?
I received an email asking me to attend the Rock Lake meeting today about the pollution control in the channel. And I did attend that right up until the beginning of this meeting and then had to leave. Also received the email about the graphic designer offering some services to the city. And I was also contacted with some pictures in the email about Bartles Beach and about boats parking next to the swimming area and pulling up to shore and then taking off close without obeying the no-wake zone areas. So Rob is taking a look at that. That's all I have.
Well, I have had one constituent call me and had questions about how to be considered for committees. And so I haven't had a chance to return that person's call yet, but I will do that. Anybody else have any correspondence? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to questions and public comment. All right. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city before the meeting has been ordered. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium. Anyone in the audience like to come up to the podium at this time? Don't see anybody moving. We do have some people virtually on the computer, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, we do. If they would like to comment, they can put their name in the chat and their address in the chat and then comment.
Do you see any in that chat, Steve?
Not yet. Is anyone interested in participating virtually on the questions and public comment? I don't see anything, Diane.
Okay. And I don't see anything further in the, in the hall here either, so. Okay, then we'll close questions and public comment and move on to the city manager's report. Steve, it's all yours.
I have provided the treasures cash report for June and July and the, for the general fund and the treasures cash reports for June and July for the utility. There was also the monthly police department report provided. I did want to note that last meeting, we talked about the archaeological work for Sandy Beach and the MOA signing of the secretary where the DNR signed that today and approved our work to start. So they're probably going to start the archaeological digs out there either next week or the week after. So you'll want to keep an eye out for that if you're interested. And we met today with Brian Carranza. Did I say that right, Dustin?
Yes, you did.
And he is the new zoning administrator. And he'll be working with our software package zoning hub to allow people to get their permits in and processed online without having to come in to the office. And it will hopefully make our permitting process smoother. The building inspector zoning administrator had been extremely bogged down this year with all the building permits and zoning, and so we've split those up. Are there any questions?
I don't see any questions.
All right, thank you.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Steve. Moving to item eight, acceptance of minutes of the police and fire commission for May 21st, 2020, the joint Rock Lake committee of July 7th, 2020, the planning commission of June 23rd, 2020, and the library board of July 20th, 2020. They've been accepted and will be placed on file. Okay, item number nine, council business, number A, discussion on the 2021 city general fund utility and capital budgets. I think that you turn that back to you, Steve?
Yes, the, you should have all received an email. In fact, multiple emails, one for the general fund, one for the enterprise fund, and then several special revenue and trust funds that are budgets. Remember that it's the same as last year. You hit the sign-in, it'll pick you into each one of those. So each one of those emails will take you into a specific budget and give you all the items related to the budget. The general fund budget is the biggest one and the most important because it's under the statutory requirements. It has all the detail for every department in expenditures and revenues. And the total is $9,177,400, which is down from last year 7.27%. Remember last year, we had the, the South Main Street project, so that added a lot of cost to everything. But this is just the beginning of the process, so we'll need to schedule study sessions to go over this and discuss all of it and start the process to finalizing the budget on the first meeting in November. Are there any questions or information that you would like to have added to this? I know generally the first meeting, we pass it out, so you've only had it for like a day. And just wanted to remind you what the process was and if you needed any help getting into the, to the software to be able to review it.
When were you hoping to have the first meeting, Steve?
Well, probably have a preliminary one before the next city council meeting on the 15th. And then another one, I think there's a fifth Tuesday in September. And then at least one or two in October. Yeah, we could have one on the 15th and one on the 29th. The 29th could be a full work session. And then if we need any more in October, we can finalize it and be ready for that November meeting when we have to finalize the budget.
So would the 15th be a six o'clock meeting?
15th would be a six o'clock. The 29th could be a seven or a six.
Yeah, I think it's easier for people to do seven, but if they want six, it's doable. I prefer seven. So, okay, so should we go ahead and schedule the 15th at six in here as a work session?
That's fine with me if the council wants it that way.
Is that a problem for anybody? Not hearing from anybody?
No. No.
I don't see a.
Sounds like it's good for everybody.
We're trying to get her back on, Steve.
There we go.
There I am. I have reappeared like the Wizard of Oz. Okay, so I don't know when I cut out, but when we, we'll come back to the dates at the end of the agenda for number 10 for future agendas, so. B, discussion and decision on accepting John's disposal proposal. Oh, I like that. Disposal proposal. All right. I gotta get to that on my thing. So, let's see if I can get to mine. Steve, do you want to say anything about that?
Historically, this is the time period when we review that the contract with John's has us reviewing the fee changes and determining whether we want to extend the contract or not. They have provided their proposal, which was no change in the fees, and they did provide us with some options for some other items that we were interested in, which was recycling pickup every Tuesday and electronic disposal. And they were made available in the documents tonight. If you are interested in continuing to move forward with John's, Brian John Genesis is on to answer any questions. We would approve that motion. If not, I've also provided a copy of an RFP that would go out. We could look at changing or at least looking at multiple options. But I, I need to know tonight, RFP, we'd have to get it in the paper, we'd have to advertise it, we'd have to, the proposals, and then we'd have to interview and make a decision and have a contract ready by January 1st. So tonight would be the night we'd want to do that.
Well, I'm wondering if anybody on the council wants to put forth motion 29-1-1 that's in our packet. So is there anybody who wants to put that on the table?
Mrs. Fritsch, would you like me to read the title?
Yes.
City council motion 20-9-1-1, authorizing the city clerk to notify John's disposal that the price options have been reviewed and the city managers authorized to sign a contract extension.
Okay, because we could put, if we put this on the table, we can discuss it and other items. Anybody want to do that?
I move.
I'll move to approve motion 29-1-1.
Okay, I think I have Steve Fields. And then do you want to second it, Vicki?
I second it.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion and a second for 29-1-1. And now we can discuss the items that are in front of us. So, all right. What would you like to discuss first, council members? I gotta look at the.
The motion doesn't take into consideration the other options. If we wanted to go for just this next year with recycling every week, considering everybody's doing an awful lot of home deliveries and has an awful lot of cardboard, and/or if we wanted to include electronics, would that mean that we would be signing up for doing that for the full five years or would it just be for the one year?
Just verify answer to that. Okay, I'm Brian from John's. Yeah, I, these are options, so I think that we could write it in the contract, so it's up to you. You know, you could turn them on off whenever you want, you could wait a year, that's fine with us.
I would be interested in pursuing the weekly recycle for 2021 myself because even though I can make it all fit, an awful lot of people probably do a lot more online shopping than just I do. And I think that would be a service. I don't know what the council's feelings are about the electronics. It didn't look like it was that terribly much more expensive. I wouldn't mind trying it, but I'm kind of on the fence about whether or not we'd want to do that. So I don't know what anybody else's thoughts are.
We, when I, when we interact with people, a lot of people do indicate that they're looking for that weekly recycling and that $1.25 a month. I think when you present it that way, $1.25 a month extra, people are in disbelief that we didn't do it sooner. Like, really, that's all it would cost? Even some people, you can choose which week you want to put it out. You might skip a week, but you can put it out the next week. Now, if you miss a week, then you're really in big trouble if you're gone on Sunday and you don't get it out for Monday morning, you know? It's really, you gotta make it a whole month and like, nobody can do that.
I like the idea of the cardboard recycling or recycling. But it's just, I think the electronic, two events around in the county where there's opportunities for people to drop off.
The thing I think about the electronics is it would cost $35 for every monitor or TV that you want to drop off at the county. If you did that just one time, that would be $3 a month would be the average of that. That, with that in mind, I just don't know if people would be interested in doing that or not. Maybe given the economy right now, people don't want to have to have that extra fee. But maybe in future years, we could think about it.
I think John's is going to be pretty flexible. If we decide that, you know, come January, we want to turn it on, I think that's an option we have. If we decide to hold on to it for a year or even six months, I think Brian would be willing to look at how we can work that out.
Yeah, for sure. And you know, we're, we're entering a new contract, so we can write it in there so that, you know, it's satisfactory for you guys to turn it on. I, I think we'd want to go, you know, a year at a time. I don't, turn it on every, not that you'd want to be doing that either. That would be a must to turn it on more on and off more often than that, you know?
I'm also in favor of doing the weekly recycling.
I guess I would go along with that, too. Long as we've got some flexibility if the demand changes from our constituents.
Well, I.
It might be.
That's okay, go ahead, Vicki.
It might be the case that sometime when we're doing surveys of the constituents, we could get their thoughts about the recycle or the fee for electronics and leave that go for 2021 as is. But I, I really think we've been hearing from a number of people about the need for more frequent recycling, that that would be something I would certainly support is doing that in 2021, is having weekly recycle pickup.
So we do have a motion. Oh, go ahead. Who was that? Nobody? Okay. So the motion, as we have it in front of us, does not have the recycling in it, does I don't see it.
No, it does not. We would have to amend the motion.
Okay. Does someone want to do that?
I would, but I'm not sure on how to word it. Any suggestions?
I would, if we're going to go forward with this, I would just word it that we should bring the contract back to the next meeting. As long as I'm not going out for RFP, we can write it, contract, put it before you at the next meeting.
Okay, are you there, Doug?
Yeah, why don't we do that then? I'll move to amend by having the contract next, next meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to amend and a second to include recycling on a weekly basis, and it'll be brought back to the council next week, next meeting. Okay, do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. So any other comments before we vote? Okay, call the roll.
Can I just get some clarification? That was Doug made a motion to amend to include recycling and bring this item back to the next meeting, and Vicki seconded that.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that moves us to item number C, letter C, discussion decision on authorizing the city manager to sign the motor vehicle dealer license application for the fire service. Okay, we have a motion. Would you read that title for us, please?
City council motion 20-9-1-2, authorizing the city manager to sign a motor vehicle dealer license application.
Okay. And Steve, you want to just give us a very short synopsis here?
Whenever a group decides to start selling vehicles, the state requires the municipality to guarantee, to warranty or sign off that they have certain features on their property. So like they have a building and they have a parking lot and they have other things so that when they set out vehicles, it's, it's meets the requirements of the state. So they ask someone, a local zoning officer, to sign off on that. In this case, I would prefer to sign off on it. We've done this in the past. We did it with Ryan's Auto and remember, Vicki, was it 2004?
I don't remember the year, but yeah, I remember doing it.
And so it's just a, it's just a formality that we guarantee that there are items that are on that form that they have that they have to fill out that we have to guarantee or a warranty that are there. They're on the second page and it says, a permanent building, not a residence, tent or temporary stand, an office within the building, a minimum of 12 by 20-foot area accessible for automobile display, repair and preparation within the building. for automobile display, repair and preparation within the building, um or a repair shop on the premises or a service agreement with a nearby repair shop, an outdoor vehicle display lot for at least one vehicle adjacent to the building or other or all other vehicles kept indoors, an exterior sign with business name on it that will appear on the license certified and and any other name used to the business under. The lettering of the sign must be a minimum of four inches high unless smaller dimensions are required by a local zoning or sign ordinance. So and a sign posted on or adjacent to the entrance or describing business hours, so that they have all that. They they've got the business set up there at Industrial Drive. Um we've been working with them, so um I'm willing to sign it, but I wanted to make sure the council was comfortable with that.
Are we sure that they're gonna meet the current zoning there?
I think it it's a little bit of an expansion on the existing zoning there, um but we'll we'll work with them on that. I think we already have several businesses in there that are under the same type of, that do the same type of thing. And uh and we'll probably need to clean up some of the zoning in that area, but I'm comfortable with this at this point.
So there's no chance that this is going to become like a used car lot that that kind of converts into a junkyard?
This is, well, either way, under the zoning, it would be that, but what this is, is they're not selling cars, they're selling fire trucks. Uh so I I don't see it as that, and if you look at how much investment they've made in the building now, it's pretty substantial. I don't know if you want to put any other conditions on it, but the the zoning is is uh pretty consequential on it, and I think that most of it'll be inside.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? So basically, we're looking at the fact that they're gonna be using the site for selling fire trucks. Am I understanding this?
That's correct. They'll be doing repair on the inside and then they'll have some fire trucks that they take in. They they do sell new fire trucks. But they don't put a lot of them out because most most fire trucks are sold by specifications.
Any concerns or discussion? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion pass four zero.
Okay. Back to my agenda here. The great flip-flop. Okay, moving to item D. We have a motion. Would you read the title of that, please?
City Council motion twenty-nine-one-three, authorizing the city manager to proceed with alternative blank for review of Rock Lake Activity Center purchase.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I will move motion twenty-nine-one-three.
Do I have a second?
Well, we need clarification. We're asking for an alternative.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
The memo establishes certain alternatives, and the motion requests that you provide which alternative you proceed with.
You should turn your mic on, Dan.
Could you repeat?
Okay, so my statement is that the memo requests um or provides certain alternatives and the motion requests that you make a decision as to what alternative you'd like to proceed with.
Okay, so we have
So a blanket motion doesn't really answer that question.
Well, could we amend amend?
Can we discuss this without a motion on the table? Oh, okay. All right, so we'll um Doug, do you want to withdraw your motion for the moment?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just move into discussion. Steve, you wanna do a little discussion uh discussion on this?
Well, I provided you with a memo that kind of goes over all the issues, um discusses the background that we've had so far, the study sessions, the um current issue that's before us. We uh is currently run by a nonprofit organization. They've entered into an agreement with Lake Mills Area School District, and that's kind of with in line with what our study sessions looked at. And they discussed um that we had the discussions in our committees that uh we would participate in that group uh if we needed to, to be able to make Rock Lake viable. Uh we did at one point provide them with a uh loan to do a lot of work on the building. Uh it has made a substantial difference in the uh activities there and the conditions that people are functioning under there. So they've kind of rebounded from what it was a year ago when we had our, or yeah, a year ago, we had our initial conversations. Uh but they were still looking at us participating by owning the building. And uh so I went over some of the issues that were there, and then I discussed from my perspective. Um when we originally talked about it, it was looking at it from a a perspective of um picking it up and taking the building over uh if because we already had a substantial investment in it, and and we would look at figuring out how to continue to make it operate. With it being sustainable now, um I would, I looked at it in a different perspective. You know, they're making enough money to make their their debt payments and keep up with a lot of the operations that they have going on there. Uh the school is going to pick up a lot of the op operational costs, and we would be looking at the building costs. So it was, let's set up a special revenue fund and looking at trying to make that operation as um sustainable as possible, so that it was all the money that we were generating fees would cover the costs that we had in it. I'm looking and thinking that um if I remember correctly, there were about three hundred and ten thousand dollars that they still owe on the building roughly. Um if we bought that out and took over the building um to get our three hundred and ten thousand dollars back out of that, um we would look at some types of fees that would be involved in that. Uh we would also then look at at um some type of fund to maintain that billing over the long term. Uh and that's why you would use a special revenue fund because you would identify those revenues and make sure that you were charging enough to at least come within a perspective of what you would anticipate that facility to be able to generate in order to cover associated costs. Uh we don't have any higher level requirement to use a special revenue fund. This would be a special revenue fund set up by the council. The state or the feds or or there's no other organization that above us that would require it. So we we would look at that, and then we would go through and and look at all the um criteria that we would use to think about how we would run this and how we would manage it from owning the building. And I think that um if you want to consider, there there were three alternatives that I provided, and one of them is to do nothing. So if you select alternative number one, it it all ends right here. We don't have any further discussion. There was an alternative number two, which looked at it and said, um yes, we're going ahead. We're gonna buy the building and do it under a special revenue fund. And then an alternative number three looked at it and said, hey, we don't quite have enough information yet. Let's organize a committee and work towards getting this done by the time we head into the final budget meeting to be able to make a recommendation on which direction we wanted to head. Um answering a lot of the questions that are that are still remaining out there as far as how we feel about it, you know? We're gonna obviously be in this with the school district. They're gonna be collecting all the fees, you know, how are we gonna divide those fees up? What are the exact conditions of of operations and maintenance? Um and those types of things really should be worked out in a memorandum of understanding and and finalized before we we make any final decision on this, in my opinion. Obviously, you guys could make a decision to do nothing, or we're gonna do it now, or continue to study this on a on a time. I think um Wendy Brockler from the school district has a very good handle on this. And being able to sit down with her and a couple other people with uh such as Ben and some of the people from uh uh the Rock Lake Activity Center Board would be able to come up with something that we could make a very substantial proposal by the November fourth. So I have three alternatives there. I'm gonna run over them quickly for you, giving you a lot of detail packed into um what I think will occur under each one of those scenarios. And uh you, do you have any questions?
Well, it sounds to me like the logical alternative is number three and and doing the ad hoc committee uh with the school district and and ARLEC um is what we should do, but that's just my opinion.
I got a question in that. Has the COVID and quarantine affected anything from what's been go, what's uh modeled here in the uh in the memo that you gave us, the motion or any of the other stuff, other information?
Their annual memberships are out there, so some of that is that, a lot of it is activities that are being run in that place. I would say that, yes, initially, COVID had some substantial impact on that and may adjust it uh so that one year. But there's no guarantee in any year where when you set up your fees and your charges that you're going to be precisely on board. It's kind of like on sanitation, special revenue account. You know, some years were a little under and some years were a little over our estimates. What we try and do is over the course of a period of time, make it so that we we hit uh the targets for running and operating the fund. But yes, I would, I would say that COVID at least had some level of impact. And you have, there's uh Ben Dayton is on, uh if you want him to speak, I'm sure he can speak to that.
Yeah, wait.
Absolutely. Um just being in the recreation field, um you know, across the state, well, across the nation, frankly. Uh we've we've all seen some um effects of COVID, I think, along with any other business. I mean, we're in the business of people, and um in the immediate time, yes, there are gonna be some impacts with COVID. Uh what we're starting to see too, along with our our programming as we've started to get rolling again with things, is that people are looking to get you know, interact, and and there's one thing that I can say is true with recreation in general, which is what both us and the ARLEC uh do is recreational activities, is we're very nimble people and we can create and do different things to um continue to offer programming and uh and adjust with those times. It's not bulletproof for sure, so there will be um, you know, impacts to, potential impacts to revenue. But overall, um I think this idea too is also a long-term idea to, uh COVID hopefully won't be around for forever. But uh but our rec programming will always be there, and I think we'll be able to uh, you know, bounce back in full strength.
Thank you.
Steve, I have a question is to how does this play with our ordinance as far as adding a new building or real estate to the city? I know I brought that up earlier, that I had a email from a constituent that questioned whether we had to have a referendum on adding a a new building to the city.
Yeah, the ordinance and yeah, Vicki can probably speak to it better than I can, but uh the ordinance says that it has, if it's over five hundred thousand dollars, well, this would be under, this would be three-ten. So the ordinance wouldn't really impact this.
I would, I would just verify that because if we're counting the two hundred thousand we gave them already and this, we already, we're gonna have over a half a million into this facility.
Yeah, that's not the, the ordinance isn't, doesn't work that way. It doesn't accumulate over years. So two hundred thousand dollars last year and and uh three hundred thousand this year and whatever we put into it in the future isn't an accumulated impact. It's a five hundred thousand dollar shot.
Consider it as a one plan.
Yeah, yeah, we went over that a couple times prior when we did some other buildings. We've looked at this mall in just about every form and fashion you can think of, and yeah, so it's it's a five hundred thousand dollars of one shot.
I just had the question posed to me a few weeks ago, so I'm just following up on it.
Yep, I understand. And we we get that question every time we look at purchasing a facility or modifying a facility. So I know that when we redid the uh Public Works Building, we spent a lot of time going over um those details and those types of issues. So it, you know, it's it's like, you know, if we built the Public Works Building thirty years ago and um we're now adding on another five hundred thousand dollars, does that make it a ten million, five hundred thousand dollar building or just a five hundred thousand dollars? So it was, we've kind of worked through those issues and determined that we were, we were comfortable with it being a a five hundred thousand dollars a year level.
You know, I'd like, I'd just make the statement that I am definitely more in favor of the option C. Um me personally, if we're basically going into this as a joint venture, you're basically buying into a business. So I'd like to see a little more financials in just the one year from nineteen, and I'd like to see a little bit more of a business plan or a game plan moving forward, or even if there's an option on performance bonds or something like that that would maybe protect the city's interests, so we weren't dipping into our own revenue if something went wrong.
I'm not opposed to any of those concepts. That's something we could work on as we move forward.
I would be more comfortable if we continued to study the options rather than setting up a committee to do it.
Do you have any idea how you want to do that, Vicki? Uh do you want to meet on a regular basis with this other group?
No, um but when questions that need to be delved into and answered, we could have specific agenda items and take tackle them one at a time on a council agenda.
I understand what Vicki's saying, because it would be nice if we were, if we had the opportunity to ask questions along the way versus just having a packet dropped and trying to read between the lines and figure things out, kind of a challenge reading through it. Because basically, you have to understand their entire business plan to get a comfort level that it's gonna work out and not impact the city on a revenue basis.
So would that be alternative number four?
Yeah, there's always council alternatives. You could develop like as many as you needed and
What I think I heard Vicki say is we would work within our own thing and then present what we need to to the school district and to the Arlec. And then when things come up, we bring it back to the council piecemeal.
I don't think it was worked out quite that well. I I took it as a little bit different. I thought that maybe we would put it on the agenda and then we would ask for information to be developed for that agenda and have that conversation at that time.
In other words, each specific item going through?
Yes.
Now, is there a time agenda or not? Do we need to have have it done by a certain date? This is going to be every day that this will be time consuming?
Is it is it all right if I speak for a minute or? Is it is it okay for me to speak?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I think as far as the questions that Steve had brought up or the topics as far as a business plan, as far as the specifics to the MOU that we would have to establish. I mean, I think that's something that I feel we could pull together. Whether I'm working with Steve or maybe some council members as well. I feel like we could pull that together and put it in a way that is understandable. And oh, boy, I lost my train of thought. In addition, sorry, the other question too was as far as our stability. I think that is why this approach is so unique with the city, the school district and and Arlec as the foundation is that the school district through Fund 80 can really kind of weather some storms. I know we, I mean, in all government, we're trying to avoid misuse of spending or potentially asking for more money from the public. But we do have some flexibility if something were to happen, if there was a shortfall. And just like with all of the years that we've been operating, some years are great. Some years are not so great, but we do have that ability to be flexible. So there's that that foundation, that stability, which is really important for us and as as far as our business or as far as the rec department is concerned. So I I hope that answers some of what Steve was kind of bringing up. But yeah, we're more than willing to get moving and working on this. The deadline or the proposed idea to get it done, which would be very clean from the school district side of things, would be January 1 this year. And so I think it might get a little more difficult if we pushed it to another year, but it's always it's always doable.
Steve, do we need to have this just determined by our budget date? Is your mic on, Steve?
I just turned it off. Yeah, it would help if because I I could budget for it in the budget and have a special revenue fund set up and kind of have some idea of what was occurring. I could create a budget and we may not use it and head that way. But if we're going to look at, you know, their timeline was January 1st, so if we're doing that, something needs to be set up on on that budget meeting that we go through in November. Even if we even if we don't use it, it really should be in there.
That's what I was thinking too.
Well, could we do a work session included with the budget?
Well, it's going to be a part of the budget. So, yeah, we could at every budget work session, we could bring up some part of it. Like Vicki said, that you guys can ask questions and and Ben and I and whoever else needs to be there can can help you work through all those questions. If that's, you know, what you're looking at.
Have an end date, try and get it done by certain by the time the budget needs to be done.
That would be an option that would be relatable to what the school district and and Arlec are looking at. You know, I've given you three options. Vicki's presented a fourth. You guys can work with that and come up with an idea. The you know, if under any one of the scenarios, well, alternative number two is to go ahead and do it. Alternative number one is to not do it. So if you're somewhere in between there and at some point, you know, you set a timeline of let's say November 5th. On November 5th, you say, we're really not ready. You could say, you know, that that's what's going to happen. We're just not going to do it yet. We'll continue to study it or we'll say we're not doing it or, you know, whatever the options are. That that's kind of in your ballpark. I mean, I can put together all kinds of information. I can work with these people to get you what you need, but at some point in time, you're going to have to make the decision yes or no. And the timeline is kind of it's important to the school district, but it's, you know, if you're going to say no, it's really not that important to anybody. And so it's it's a you guys got to work through that.
Well, I guess I hear a lot of support for three, but on the other hand, there's still a lot of questions that people have. I think if you were to start working on a memo memorandum of understanding and bring the issues to us in the work session, would that work out? As long as we keep in mind that we're trying, we we're trying to get done. We aren't going to continue it forever. We at least are pushing forward to a to try and get this done by a certain time. I guess my concern is that it doesn't get done. A yes, no, or somewhere in between.
I think that because our timeline is a lot more compressed than what I was originally envisioning, I'm leaning more towards number three. Because a committee that works on these items with the idea being that we're moving towards number two, the committee could bring things to the council in our budget work sessions or a regular council meeting to get our input as they work along on it. But a committee would be able to meet more often than our regular meetings would allow. So I don't really have an objection to going with alternative number three.
Anyone else have any deep seated feelings?
I'm with Vicki on alternate number three. I just think we have enough information to move forward. So I got a lot of questions that I'd like to get answered first. I'd like to see the final deal.
So would I.
So would I.
I concur too, so I'm I'm okay with with number three.
With that understanding in mind, could I make a motion that we do number alternative number three with bringing back the as you work through it, the committee works through it, bringing back any information, we ask for any information and so on?
I can keep you regularly updated during the budget study sessions.
All right, that I'll make that motion.
Well, are we going to use the resolution that's on the table before us?
I think that, yes, it will work. You can use that motion with alternative number three in there.
With the understandings that we've discussed here.
Yep. You comfortable with that, Dan?
Yeah, I guess I didn't hear everything that Mr. Fritsch suggested. It seemed like regular administrative updates and stuff like that. I didn't think that any of that necessarily needed to be included in the motion as an amendment. So if he's identifying alternative three and wants to stick with the language, that is the motion. If he'd like to amend it to include, you know, other obligations of staff or or more clarity, that would be all right. But I believe everything he said was was basically in the spirit of the motion. If you're identifying number three as the option.
Yeah, I got as long I don't know whether it needs to be spelled out, but I I would say, yeah, I'm fine with number three.
So that would mean wherever there is a blank in the current motion, we would put a three. Do we have a second for this? Yep?
Second.
Okay, have a second now. So I agree with what Vicki said earlier that the committee can work on it when the council isn't meeting and then bring it to the council. I agree with that. Okay, so motion on the table is 2913. Inserted alternative number three in all the spots that request that require it. We do have a second. Any other comments? Let's call the roll.
Diane?
Hi.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion pass four zero.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. So we can get this moving along and and we will see this information at the budget meetings. Correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Thank you for your time, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Back to my agenda. Sometimes computers and I don't get along too well. There we are. Okay, back one more step.
Item E.
Item E, discussion decision on finalizing TID eight. And let me go to that item. We have a motion also. Would you read that title, please?
City Council motion 20-9-1-4 authorizing the city manager to execute documents and proceed with completion of TID number eight.
And you did give us a report. Can we do the same thing we did with the last one where we have a little little discussion before we make the motion? Or not?
I'm comfortable with it. Does anybody else have a problem?
No.
Okay, well, let's go. Steve, just give us a real quick overview of where we stand and what our choices are.
We were moving forward with an amendment to TID number five and the creation of TID number eight. And it came up for public hearing in April. There were some requests that we hold not hold the public hearing on TID number eight until some of the COVID issues were over with. We did go ahead and move TID number five forward. We did complete all the items on TID number eight, except for the public hearing at Plan Commission. We need to complete that and file the documents in early October in order to be able to finalize it. Otherwise, we have to start pretty much over from scratch because every new year you have to go through and recertify all the conditions within the TID. So the question is, do you want to continue to move forward with this TID? And what things would you like to see changed in it? You know, at the at the beginning of TID number eight, we did have a development proposal. It was withdrawn in March based on the information provided by them that their market studies didn't think that the downtown would support condominiums. We have seen other proposals move forward. I guess my position was it's good to have the TID in place, even though we don't have anything now, but it's easier to have it in place and capture once it starts moving forward. But, you know, there are probably some things we need to do in order to make the proposal look a little bit better. I know that one of them was the height of the buildings and the look of them. It clearly didn't look like they were being built under our code conditions. And so if we put a building back in there, we should make it look like it's built under our code conditions. That might change the overall outlook, you know. Your playing, your comprehensive plan does say that you should look at taller buildings in the downtown area. And I don't know if anybody remembers, but I've had people at Economic Development Commission tell me they wouldn't support TIDS if we didn't allow taller buildings. Of course, that's not really my decision. It's your decision and it even a developer came in. It's not my job to tell him he can or can't have that. I tell him how to get to the point where you guys will consider it. So from a standpoint of what development occurs there, it's like if we cut back on and you guys say you're not going to allow anything like was in their original proposal, it might be wise to look at cutting the boundaries back because I'm sure that in order to redevelop that site, all the $10 would have to go into the redevelopment of that site. The other one was making it a money, we could afford a lot of the money into the downtown area, so it was valuable to have larger boundaries. Again, looking at the drawings that are the renderings that are in there, we tie them closer to what you would expect to actually see as development or allow as development in there. You know, at that point in time, we were we were at a broad spectrum. And your comprehensive plan and your strong towns documents say that consider that under the conditions that they be built in a certain fashion, which this proposal did allow for. But maybe we weed that out a little bit further as we move forward. But we we need to have that conversation of yes, we're going to move forward with this TID or no, we're not. And these are the conditions.
I would just like to say that the downtown businesses have had two rough years now. First, the road construction and then this year with the COVID-19, both of which made running a business very difficult. I was always looking at this TID as being a tool that the owners of the downtown businesses could use to upgrade or change their businesses for the better. Now, if we do nothing, then they get to do, there's nothing for them either. Right?
That's correct. I mean, the $10 would not be available and so we would have nothing to offer. The package and why we had the boundaries in the district, the way it was, is that there was very little money being poured into the the development on the proposed site. And so that left dollars available for other businesses in the in the TID district. Then, but, you know, that's there's a combination. All of it's about money. And so if you have very tough restrictions on the type of development that's going on in the site, that cost that they have to swallow becomes different. So if they're if we're pouring more money into the Century Site, there's less money to be spent in the other side. So if they're, if we're pouring more money into the Century site, there's less money to be spent in the other sites. So it, it's kind of a, you know, catch twenty-two situation here of, um, nobody wants to see that type of development in the downtown because it doesn't match. But then the dollars aren't necessarily as much available to the existing businesses to make improvements. And that's why I was saying, you know, if we, we can have the discussion of cutting the boundaries back and pouring all the money into the one site, making sure that it meets the conditions that were, you know, are in our code. Although there are ways, you know, there are ways to change that by Plan Design District or things along that line, which we had suggested the developer proposed that would have gone through the Plan Commission and the City Council. But in this case, it's, it's, um, what do you want to make it move forward? I'm, I'm comfortable with what we have proposed. I still think we should change some of the renderings at a minimum. But yes, it would be great if some of those dollars could spill over into the other businesses.
How do you, how do you balance that much money to these other businesses and keep enough reserves at the development where you give yourself some options on that Century, Century site? The balancing act, I guess. Looking for you to give me a little one fuzzy feeling. How do you balance that?
Historically, what we do is we look at, at, um, what the assessed value is going to be. And we evaluate the cost. So if a developer comes in and he says, if you want me to build within this set of codes, it's, I'm gonna, this is what it's gonna cost me. And this is how much money I'm gonna need from the TID in order to be able to make it work financially. And that's the but-for test that comes from the TID requirement. The less dollars he needs. So let's say, um, he's looking at, uh, commercial on the first floor and two stories of condos or apartments. The amount of money that he has to invest in that per unit, um, is higher than it would be if he were at four stories. So now you're, you're talking about, he's also creating more assessed value on a four-story than a three-story. So not only do you gain more money from the value of his property, but he also needs less money because he's generating more money from the additional apartments he has. So at some point in time, what we like to see historically when we're writing these deals is a fifty-fifty. So that fifty percent of it goes to the developer and fifty percent can be put back into other areas of the TID. That doesn't always happen. Um, you know, we look at proposals that require every penny. We look at proposals that have a very minimal amount of, of dollars required from the TID. And, you know, even when we look at, let's say, um, the Opera Hall comes in and says, we're gonna redo our building and we'd like to get this much money from the TID. They may not ever generate enough new assessed value by redoing that building to, um, get any TID dollars. So we might be taking TID dollars from what the other properties are generating and giving them a hundred and twenty percent. But because there, there's such a value in, in recapturing the, the historic nature of that building, uh, and bringing it into a condition that makes it a, of a higher value to users, uh, we may think that's a good idea. So we, we sit down and negotiate those, but it's, someone's got to be the big dollar provider. And then we could start to look at where the rest of the dollars fall.
Steve, this is Dustin. Can I, can I just jump in? This is a really unique opportunity in a downtown setting. The loss of the grocery store is certainly not ideal, but to have a two-acre site in the middle of a historic downtown of a building that never fit in when it was built anyway, um, to, to lose the, the shell of the Century building is, is, um, in truth, a good opportunity for the, for the city here. You don't have to impact other properties in the downtown, other historic properties, other nonhistoric properties. The, the graphics that are in the project plan were really just a scale enassing to show what could happen there and to show how it would feel. As, as Steve said, does it necessarily provide the historic context you were looking for? No, but by design wasn't really intended to. It was intended to show how you could meet contemporary urban design principles and provide some, uh, type of building that would be attractive to a developer in number of units and stories. Whatever happens on that site will be reviewed by the Plan Commission, the city staff, and of course, the, uh, the, the council before anything happens there. Updating the graphics is, is one thing, but without having the TID in place, you wouldn't be able to capture the opportunity that's right in front of you on a key site, a key vacant site in your downtown to help benefit other properties in the downtown. So, um, this is not a situation where you're creating a plan and then you're obligating yourself to, um, considerable dollars to do something. The infrastructure is in place. There are projects highlighted in this plan for improvements, should dollars be available. But this is a tool, as, as Ms. Fritsch said, to help incentivize redevelopment of, of the Century site and to leverage that redevelopment to benefit all of the other properties in the downtown. Without having the TID in place, which is Steve said, you've kind of carried everything to the ten-yard line already. And to stop now, um, as he outlined in the memo, would be starting over to do it again next year. So, um, I want to make sure that the council understands. The Plan Commission and the, um, and the council will be the final authority on what actually will get potentially built in the site and then moreover, how any dollars would be directed, whether it's to a developer of the site or of other properties in the, uh, in the downtown through your normal process. You work with, through your attorney, the city attorney, to, to craft development agreements when there are public dollars involved. None of that goes away, but having the TID in place where you've already done a lot of the legwork, at least gives you that tool and toolbox to work with.
I'd like to make one comment. I think everybody was just really surprised by, by that rendering that ended up in the paper. And I think one thing that I, that hits me is there's nothing, is there, that says we have to go to four stories? Couldn't we go to three stories there?
That is absolutely something that would be evaluated as the development proposal comes in. This was to show what four or five stories would look like.
Right.
Five stories that you see there is by the park. It doesn't loom over anybody's home or anybody else's business. It defines an edge. You're going to look at a development proposal that comes in, be it three stories, four stories, or ten stories, and determine if it meets your criteria for being contextual and appropriate for the development site itself. So getting bogged down on the number of stories, this is not a mandate by any stretch of the imagination. This is a rendering of kind of what scale enassing would be if it were five stories.
Well, I think the, the, the drawing coming out without the background or anything like that just scared people. It just, it really did. I mean, I had people that were really scared that Lake Mills was going to be a different place.
And, and there are others who have said, yes, five stories is ideal because then you can get lake views.
Well, I under, I understand that, but I'll be real honest with you. I didn't have one person say that to me. Not one, except the people that were building it, but nobody in town that.
And again, no one's building anything here. This is lines. So I think an important conversation that should happen aside from the TID being in place is when a development proposal comes in, that it's fully scrutinized on its own merit. If a developer came in and said, I want five stories, they're gonna need to sell you on it. But to say you're only going to allow three stories, you may be limiting yourself because as Steve said, it may not pencil out for a developer to do a three-story building, one story of commercial, two stories of residential. They may need a four-story for the financials to work for them. So I, I don't want you to, i- if revising this to kind of remove the, the hard edges and fifth story is what makes this work, that certainly can be done. But I, this is not the place to have the conversation about number of stories and density, et cetera. This is just showing you what could work on the site. Less certainly would work, but it, but it may not pencil out financially for a developer to want to do it. So if you can show them something that says, hey, we're open to, we're open to looking at four stories, you will probably have a little more luck in attracting a developer to the site. But if you said, we're only doing three stories, you may not get what you're, you know, the type of project you're looking for. So the, the, the TID is not the place to have the conversation about the density and the scale. That's for the Plan Commission and the council separately as a part of the zoning and planning review process.
I guess what I was wanting to get across is a lot of people in town would rather have an empty site there than a four or five-story building.
Okay.
And, and, and the, you know, I've had a couple of people say, well, you know, it's gonna be an eyesore the way it is. Well, a lot of people in town would say, that's just fine. I'll take it that way because I don't want a four or five-story building.
Okay, statutorily, we need to have some graphic in there that shows potential development on the site. So we do need to show something. If it's single-family homes, we can show that. If it's two commercial buildings, we can show that. But we do need to show something and we need to show something, um, that is really appropriate for historic downtown. That would be first floor retail, second, third, potentially a fourth floor of residential. And then, again, it's a big, big enough site. When you're looking at some of the buildings on there, it's because it's stepping back down because there are residences to the south or there are businesses and residences to the east. So, um, again, we do need to show some sort of development graphic in the project plan by, by state law.
Um, let me ask one other question. Can we bring forth examples of this kind of development? I think Sun Prairie has done some of it.
Certainly in the Cantonary Square.
And, and I'm not an expert on this, but, and I believe East Washington in Madison has started going to high-rise buildings as you go down East Wash.
There are a number of communities that have done things like this. Mecklenburg, Wisconsin, which is just north of Milwaukee, has a development very similar to what we put in this project plan, um, at a, at a key intersection. There are many examples that we can provide in historic downtowns. Waterford is doing a four-story building that's got forty units in it. Um, you know, they're about your size, uh, down on the Fox River. So there, there's a lot of certainly project examples we could bring in to show, to say, how do you feel about these?
Well, that's what I personally, as a council person, would like to see. I'd like a list of where these places are.
Of course.
Because if I can see it and see that it looks good in another community, then I can bring that back and say to my constituents, this is what it could look like. And, you know, but I can't tell them that they should just let a five-story building or a four-story building be built when their picture in their mind is that it's going to ruin Lake Mills.
Okay. And, and again, that's, I think, one of the challenges with the public is approval of this document in its current condition does not obligate you to what's shown here. That's a whole separate process. This is, this is the tool, tax increment financing, which we have, the city has used successfully, um, in a number of areas, from the industrial park to what you're seeing happen. And we're gonna talk about in a minute down on the south end in TID five. TID six, which includes the New Horizon building. Again, you've used it in a variety of capacities. This is the tool. If bringing back a variety of examples to have conversations with the council or at the public hearing to say, these are types of things that could work here, we can absolutely do that. But we can't have, at, at the end of the day, we do have to put a pro forma together for the TID to show that development of some type can occur on the site and it can cash flow, in a positive manner to meet statutory requirements. But what, if we just put single-family on all this whole site.
No, and I'm not, I'm not proposing that.
I'm just kind of using it as a egregious example. If we just put single-family on it, we can do that. And the pro forma can work because we don't expect to undertake any projects that can't be funded on a pay-as-you-go basis. So we do, at the end of the day, need to come up with some design plan. We wanted something that showed a developer, because when they, when a developer comes in, the first question is, do you have TIF? Does this property have TIF available? And then it becomes, what, what are we enabled to do on the site? And we wanted to show that, again, this is just scale enassing because there's no, there's no significant detail of any of the buildings in there. It just shows, in cases, balconies or porches or doors, uh, and site kind of amenities. But it doesn't really show material. It doesn't show, it doesn't, it's not a rendering, um, that, that shows detail of what would actually be constructed. So, um, I, I think it's fair to have a conversation about what more than what's on the site now would be palatable at this time, as long as we're not closing the door to a developer being able to come in and present maybe something else.
But let's put it this way. If we had two proposals before us and one was a four and one was a three and you had the options and you decided you wanted a three, that would be fine. If there was a proposal that had two and that's the one you selected, that would be fine. Or even if you had a four-story only and you said, no, we're not interested in that, that would be great. But let's at least give them the opportunity to come in before you. Because like Dustin said, all the TID does is provide a tool for them to do the financing. When they actually do the proposals, they have to come before the Plan Commission and the City Council under their site plan review documents and you will see every single detail of what they're looking at.
But I've got, I have got the question. If you have a model of a five-story in your proposal, that gives the sense that, well, we might consider a five when we wouldn't consider a five-story place in the first place. And then, then the developer says, well, yeah, but you look at what you proposed to us or what you're showing, um, and that's what I went on. Now, I don't know how it works, but I get the feeling that, uh, that might be the case. Am I wrong or what?
I imagine that a developer will always try and tell you, I was under the impression that you would take this, but TID doesn't do that. The zoning does. So look at what the zoning says. And then the proposal that he's bringing forward, you have to approve the changes. So if it's coming under a Plan Design District or something like that. I mean, you know, I'm gonna take advantage of every opportunity I can get to tell you something that'll get you to do what I want. Correct? It's your job to say, no, it's not appropriate, or yes, it is. I think that, you know, what Diane's asked and, and if you go out and check, there are some really nice developments around the, the state that fall within the category that we're looking at here that probably would be acceptable to the vast majority of people. I, you know, there, there are a lot of fives, there are several five-story buildings in Watertown and I think in Fort Atkinson. Um, most people don't even notice them.
Yeah, along the river.
But if modifying the graphics in the TID project plan is really what is necessary, absolutely, we can do that. I just want to make sure that the council will be willing to listen if a developer comes in and says, "I want to talk about four stories." Because making these sites pencil out is going to be the important part. And it has to function well for you as a community, but it also has to be able to be built.
One thing that I think plays a big piece in this whole planning is what that building looks like will be a big piece of the puzzle. And I've seen this in other cities where you drive by and you say, "Wow, you know, that looks really nice there." And it is a four- or five-story building. But they really did a nice job of making it look like it belonged there physically, but with the architecture and the whatever, the design, the area around it, maybe a picket fence, who knows? You know? But I think that's a big piece of this puzzle, too. I, you know, I don't want somebody to come in and do, you know, Scandinavian modern in the downtown.
So, again, very understandable. The TID doesn't get into the architecture and those details. Again, these graphics were just scale and massing. We did not want to get into kind of designing an entire building for this site, and we didn't want to predetermine the architecture or the architectural elements from the site. We wanted to just show what a, in some places, three, four, and five-story elements would look like and feel like in the downtown in relation to the other buildings that are there. Because there are a number of buildings there that technically are two-story buildings, but they are 30 to 35 feet tall, which is a three-story building, right? And if you had, on the north end of the Century Site is the park. So it's going to be wide open, right? You're not looming over anybody's home. So would a four-story feel overwhelming there? Not necessarily, depending upon its design. Was that four-story stepped back a little bit so there were just balconies and you could overlook the city? Someone might pay a considerable dollar to rent or own those units. Because when we worked with you about a year or so ago, talking about affordability in the community, one of the things that came up is half of the renters in your community have a household income over $100,000 a year. So they're choosing to rent by choice. This may be the kind of product that is attractive to them. Moreover, you obviously have a lot of lake property owners. Somebody may want to be in the community and have lake views, but doesn't necessarily want to be on the lake and is willing to pay those dollars. So that's why the four-story and the five-story was being shown, not to necessarily say, "Absolutely, this is what it must be." It really was, "Let's just show what it would feel like." Again, if you're standing on the street, you can get an idea of what 40 feet means or 45 feet means in relation to what's around it. But to your point, a developer and your architect can come in and show you high-detail plans and renderings of what would be built out there and what it would look like in relation to everything around it. The TID does not get into that.
Okay. I get it. So what do we need to do tonight? What's our agenda item covering here?
The motion covers moving forward with the TID, which would allow us to do the public hearing at the Plan Commission, finalize the documents. Because those are the final things that need to be done. Is that correct, Dustin?
That is correct. We're three meetings short. We need a public hearing on the project plan. It needs to then come to the council for its approval, and then, following council, go to the joint review board. But making revisions to the render graphics shown here is certainly something that can be done, to kind of bring it down a little bit and then revise the pro forma a little bit based on what's in there.
Well, and also, in those three meetings, we could bring in pictures of some of these other communities and what they look like so that the public isn't upset. I mean, I felt bad because I knew what the intent was. But, boy, we increased the blood pressure for a few people here in town, which wasn't...
Certainly not the intention.
No, I know, but it did, you know, it did happen. Okay, so now, we do not have a motion yet, do we?
No.
No, we don't. Okay. So, and the one thing I want to say is, the part of this that I really like is if we play our cards right, we should be able to also do things that will help our current business owners downtown. If we are smart about what we do, there will be dollars or possibly some dollars to help our current owners of our businesses to make changes, improvements, updates, who knows? Which, right now, we can't offer anybody because we don't have any dollars, right?
Correct.
So what's the pleasure of the council?
I would move to approve motion 29-14.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second. The only comment I want to make is, by passing this, we are not tying our hands to any program or any plan or anything. We're looking at possibilities. Would that be accurate?
As I read the motion, it's you're telling the staff, "Okay, let's restart kind of where we left off, which is, let's get a public hearing scheduled. Let's revise the document a little bit." And then, following a public hearing, it would come to the council and then ultimately the joint review board to finalize the project plan. But obviously, Plan Commission, the public, and the council would be weighing in along those steps.
Yeah, this doesn't even finalize the TID. This just starts it back up again. If we... If you had at some point in time after the Plan Commission meeting, the council gets again and says, "Hey, we're not going to do it," it stops there. At least we put the final effort into trying to complete it.
I think one thing I want to mention is, there was a time in history of Lake Mills where all the buildings were one-story downtown. When they started, I don't think many of them went to two stories right away. And that means that what we're looking at has been done before by people saying, "Well, you know, I have my business here, but gee, if I added something up, I could put some apartments here," or whatever else they decided to do. So this is not the first time we've had this discussion in the city. Well, what is the pleasure of the council? Any other discussion? Otherwise, we could just call a vote. Hearing none, I'll call a vote.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay. And would you please get the list of those places that have things out to me? If not, send it to all the council members.
I will work with Steve, and we'll get that distributed.
Then we can go take field trips around the state in our car and not talk to anybody while we do it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for the input. And thank you for Dustin for helping explain it.
Certainly.
And Steve, you too, so... Resolution 2333 for Topol's Towing. Would you read that, please? Let's see, read the title.
Resolution 20-33, "Resolution Authorizing Execution and Submittal of Application for Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Investment Grant, City of Lake Mills in Jefferson County, Wisconsin."
Okay. Now, what is the pleasure of the council? Does someone want to make a motion regarding this or...
I will move Resolution 20-33.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Okay, thank you. So, Steve, do you want to quick... Give us a real quick overview here for the people listening in TV land?
I'm going to let Dustin do it because he's the one that wrote the grant.
Okay, that sounds good. Thanks. Sorry to make you work so hard.
That's okay. That's okay. So part of the redevelopment that the Topols are going through, and that's a next agenda item, I think, from memory. They're working with the city, and their property is located within TID number five. TID number five has been focused on encouraging redevelopment in the South End, South entry to the community, generally at Main Street and Sandy Beach Road. The city is partnering with the Topols on certain elements to encourage the redevelopment of their site. We are looking to apply for grant monies to help offset some of those costs. The city is looking to acquire land and construct a regional retention basin in that area by the golf course. There are some number of things that just kind of need to occur in that area, which is removal of some of the existing buildings, cleanup of the sites, masquerading, and construction of the stormwater management facility to serve Topol's site, but then also surrounding properties to solve flooding issues and to ensure that each individual property down there doesn't need its own stormwater pump. So this grant, which is a one-to-one match, which has a maximum award of $250,000, in a sense, the city will be using TIF dollars and potentially others, and I'll let Steve talk about that, to use as a match for any grant award. And this resolution, in essence, is saying, "The council understands this and will enter into a grant contract with Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation to that end."
Sounds like a win-win to me.
It absolutely is.
And if we pass this resolution, that gives us the money to go on for the next part of the agenda, right?
Yes. So the grant is somewhat tied to the next part of this, but in essence, passing this resolution says that if a grant is awarded, you are going to match the award amount and pursue the projects that we've outlined in the grant, which is, you know, demolition, site cleaning, clearing, cleaning, remediation, and construction of stormwater management.
The... Obviously, there's $250,000 available the city has to match at. We have looked at what the assessed value of the new site will be, and we've made some estimates as to what we could contribute to that. And we're looking at, you know, somewhere between $600,000 and $700,000 of potential TID dollars that could be contributed along with the $250,000. Obviously, we have to sit down and finalize our developers' agreement. We've been working with Dan and Tara on that, and we hope to have that completed here shortly. But we need to submit this grant because they are getting ready to move forward quickly.
Steve, if I can clarify, the attorney is reminding me, this is really saying that the city expects to use TID dollars for the match. So, not general fund dollars, but TID dollars.
That's a good point. Important point. What's the pleasure of the council? Any questions or comments? Are you out there, everybody? Looks okay? All right.
Looks okay to me.
Let's call the room.
Ms. Schmidt?
Your mic is turned off, Vicki.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Moving on. Okay. Resolution 2034, would you read that title, please?
City Council Resolution 20-34, "Conditional Use Permit: Declarations and Findings, Topol's Holdings LLC, DBA Topol's Towing and Repair, 1110 and 1122, South Main Street, Parcells 2460713, 2422003, and 2460713, 2422004."
All righty. Need a motion to pass this resolution? Do I have that from the council?
I move adaption...
Oh, I think I heard Vicki first.
I move adoption of Resolution 2034.
I'll second.
Okay, Steve is second. Okay, got a motion and a second. Lot of words in this one. Looking at it. Steve, no, Dustin.
Yep, it's Dustin.
Dustin, we're just going to make you sleep real good tonight.
That's okay. So this is the conditional use for the redevelopment of Topol's towing site. The conditional use is required for auto repair establishments, motor vehicle repair establishments. The memo that's been provided in there from the Plan Commission kind of outlines all the key elements. But in essence, the Topols are proposing to raise everything on the site except the kind of historic core building and then integrate that into the development of a new facility, about 14,000 square feet. There will also be a retail component as Phase 2, as a possible auto parts store. But in essence, all-new building, all-new site, new screen, storage areas, lighting, et cetera. The building renderings were provided in there. Variety of materials that comply with our zoning code requirements for design guidelines. Clean, white, crisp, contemporary feel while retaining kind of that historic kind of original building that I think everybody's kind of walked into with the offices. The resolution that was passed by the Plan Commission and based on the memos highlights all of the elements that were required in the zoning code and any modest changes to the plans that were provided. But the Topols worked very hard with their architects and engineers to redevelop the site in a manner that is in keeping with what we want to see in TID 5, to be a catalyst project for more redevelopment down in that area. So certainly want to applaud them for their hard work on this. If there are specific questions, I can certainly answer them. But they're looking to really grow their facility and add a number of staff, full-time staff persons. grow their facility and add a number of staff, full-time staff persons.
I like the idea that you have of keeping the old part of the building and then extending on it. I think that's really cool. We do too much raising and losing a lot of old stuff, so I like that.
Actually, I think we might want to ask Matt or Brian, and I think that when they were looking at the construction of the building, they might have to raise that old part, and they will try and build it back in as a replica, not actually saving the old part, but maybe they could comment.
Yeah, Steve, you've got Matt Krugman here from Free D and Associates, the general contractor working with Angus and the Toples. That is correct. When we started looking at the structural nature, it was, in a sense, going to cost more money to be able to maintain the structural integrity of that existing building while building around it. However, in talking with Dan and Tara, we all agree it is important to keep the homage to the history and the past. So when we create the new facility, there is going to be a replica in the front corner and actually restored to what it was originally designed to look like with some pretty cool functioning glass windows that look like garage doors. So while we do have to take down the original structure, there will be an existing homage to the history and the past constructed with the new facility.
A lot of good thought has gone into the... Any comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
You did it. Thank you for putting in all the hard work you've been putting in, and make the south side as good as that north side, right? Thank you. So, all right. That takes us to Item H, Ordinance 1215. Would you read what you need to read for that?
Ordinance 1215, amending Chapter 211 Utilities Municipal, adding Article 3 Wireless Communications Facilities and the Right of Wire.
Okay. Now, there was some talk last time of doing it in two readings. Are we still thinking like that, or should we just pass it to third reading?
I think we're comfortable with it going to a third reading. Where are you at, Dan? I know that we're negotiating with a company this week, but... Yeah, it doesn't seem imminent at this point. A third reading shouldn't be a problem. All right.
Then let's leave it that way. We have not had any big push of people in the audience about this one, so I'm not too worried. Okay, moving to third reading then. Ordinance 1216, would you read that title?
This is a first reading, so I'll read it in full.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinance 1216, amending City of Lake Mills, ordinance 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, Parcells 2460713, 2422011, and 24607132422012, Gerald E. Schultz and Mary H. Schultz, 1324 South Main Street. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does as follows. Section 1, City of Lake Mills, ordinance 660-44, the official zoning ordinance and map of the City of Lake Mills are hereby amended to zone the following described property, from planned industrial to multifamily residential, R312 to WIT, Parcells 2460713, 2422011, and 2460713, 2422012, 1324 South Main Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, 53551. Section 2, the parcels consist of approximately 2.57 acres and are depicted on the attached map, which is incorporated herein. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contributing to provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
And your packet does have a photo and information about the site.
Diane, I believe that the developer is in the audience tonight and would like to request, I believe, if you offer him the opportunity to move this to a third reading.
Oh. And how do you feel about that?
I'm comfortable with it. But if Christian is still there, I would ask you to ask him for the motion first.
Come on up, yep. Go ahead, and we don't, it's, he can speak, because it's directly from this, right? We don't have to suspend the rules.
The mic, yeah, there you go.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Yep. My name is Christian Stubs, the developer at 1324 South Main. I'd like to request that this be moved to a third reading.
And is that just for expediency purposes?
Yes, we'd like to get going sooner than later, so obviously take advantage of weather.
Yeah, and low interest rates, right?
That's good, too.
Okay. How's council feel about that? Do I have a motion to move this from a first reading to a third reading, to suspend the rules?
I'll move to suspend the rules from a first reading to a third reading.
One second.
Okay. Dan?
Yep.
We can do it all in one fell swoop like that? Yes, okay, good. All right.
He did say motion to move to a third reading and to adopt the ordinance grant.
Yes.
I'm having trouble.
Oh. And what was the last thing you said? And to adopt?
Yeah, I questioned what his motion actually was. I heard him say motion to third reading. I'm wondering if he added "and to adopt." If he completed that statement, then yes, one motion is appropriate.
Is that added?
I will add the words "to adopt."
Okay, we've got it.
With the approval of my secondor.
Yes, that was Steve, right? Or was it...
One second.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and go to third reading and adopt. Okay. Is there any discussion on this before we vote? Anybody have questions? We've got the people with answers here. If not, call the roll.
Diane?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
You're set to go. We'll expect to see all the stuff moving tomorrow morning. No, not quite that fast, right? Okay, well, good luck. Thank you for waiting. Okay, so that takes care of Item H. Aye, aye, okay. And then that takes us to Recommendations for Future Agendas, which we talked about earlier with the meeting for budget. I think we decided a budget meeting for, get my trusty calendar out here, for 6 o'clock at the next meeting on the 15th of September. And should we do 7 o'clock on the 29th of September rather than 6? I'd prefer that, but I miss all my people here. I can't get any answers. Okay. I'm going to suggest 7 o'clock on the 29th. If you decide that you want that different, just let Steve know. Or do you have any feelings, everybody out there in computer land?
Well, maybe we could start out with that as what we're going to do, and then depending on how the work session goes, next time, we may decide we have to start earlier just so we can get the work done.
Okay, I can handle that. We'll leave it that way for the time being. And then probably looking at a third meeting, unless we've just got it so well done that we don't need a third reading, third meeting, which, again, we could determine at a later time. Okay, anything else that you want put on the agendas? Coming from the council, or Steve, or Dustin, or anybody? Okay. All right. Well, if not, then I think our meeting is finished, and we are adjourned.